All right. Good. All right. We've had a caller, he's here for the August 7, 2018 meeting. Started to run a little bit late at 7:05. We had a budget meeting. We did have a couple of attendees and thanks to those folks for coming to hear about how we're spending your money. That's a pretty important thing. So, first thing we're going to do tonight is our public input. And I encourage citizens of Grant to come on up and talk to us about any item not included on the regular agenda. Okay? So come on up, you're going to get two minutes, five speakers, five speakers maximum, and you can come on up and talk. I'm going to recognize Mr. Bowman first. And name an address, please. Here we go, 10,600 Joliet Avenue North. A couple of things really quick here, we brought up about the para and all that. 1996, having up to the Capitol, we got it set in stone. Then when you were elected, you're supposed to get all that information and you were told about joining para if you wanted or not. So it was up to the people that were elected to know about that. Mr. Schneider! There you go. I always believe we're a nation of laws. There's one of the guys that enforce it. Lawyers piss me off because you know the laws. But I'm looking at that hockey rink and it's coming through here and I talked to a couple of legal advocates and everything about it. What we read is, it's a private company LLC and we only allow sewer water in for the sewer and that was an exception that was brought in there. So that might be one of the points that we're looking at when that comes through. And I'd still like to have two Washington County cops for security there at the hockey rink when that opens up, I brought it up last year. And I'd still like two cops there because it's a private organization that comes in there and we've got to protect ourselves. Plus, I'd like two cops instead of one. I'm running for school board, I'm in United School District. I put my name in because nobody's ever run. I'm against the levy that's going on out there. What I understand is it's going to triple our levy that we're paying right now. And it was double, but we've had some people that look at the stuff and write it and only gets written up, it's going to triple. The other thing I didn't understand and people have told me is there's parking fees to park at the school. Three hundred bucks up close, two hundred at the next parking lot, and a hundred here and you share our luck, you haven't got the money. Last year I got up here and I suggested that we should start charging a hundred dollars per student that go there for our roads. Think about it again, gentlemen. Hopefully, you can talk to the lawyer, see if we can pull off something like that. But I don't think a hundred bucks, we should start at three hundred bucks per student. Another thing is the stuff that's been going on on Joliet and One Tenth up there with all the wetlands being dug and that. We've got pictures, a person on the backhoe digging and everything, so there's pictures out there for Mr. Kramer if he's still involved with this stuff. And also, I've got one of those towers on my property and there's a little thing on the bottom that says you cannot dig around or underneath them. Nobody's contacted XL Energy, you might want to contact them. Mr. Kramer, contact XL Energy. Thank you, gentlemen, I know the time is short.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, I appreciate that.
Oh, school board.
Anyone else for public input?
Larry, yeah. Mr. Lenu, I think you have a seat up here, you have all the public input we can probably take up here. Are you sure you want to come up here?
No.
You'd rather go there, huh?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I'm not going to stop you. Go ahead, you've got your two minutes, I'll start it out.
Very good.
Right ahead. And now.
It's really nice you got a time clock, you should bring out your egg timer.
Set it right here, Larry, pass. Two minutes, you know the clock, so you read every...
I made a formal request for a special meeting notice. You gentlemen have failed to honor that special meeting by statute. The thing was not posted. And the special meeting I called for was health, safety, and welfare for the City of Grant. The other one was public participation. Some of that documentation I've asked for, a document, city clerk, some of it I have still yet to see. You've not honored it, I've asked to have it put on the agenda. I've been told that it is... Mayor Huber, would you be kind enough to look and see what's being said? You're looking at the damn clock, are you more concerned about the clock or the city of Grant?
I can hear you just kind of silly, go ahead.
Yeah, you're very disrespectful.
Mr. Lenu, could you please focus your remarks on the substance of...
My line is on the disconnection by the mayor.
Please focus your remarks on the substance of what you want to offer.
Would you like to... I'd like my two minutes back.
You have forty seconds.
The attorney seems to get involved in this and get his comments thrown here also. But I'd like to finish and say, I'm going to ask these items to be put on as an agenda. They've been asked to be put on the agenda already. The council majority says they either decide prior to it, I made the request afterwards, so it would not put on the agenda, so if you three voted not to put it on the agenda, I would like to determine and get an answer from the city who determined not to put these items, but asked to be put on the agenda, on tonight's agenda, whether it are city administrators or was it the council majority. I would like a simple answer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Lenu was party to a lawsuit which he sued the city and various officials. Connection with that lawsuit, he's made various allegations, including claims relating to claimed open meeting law violations. I'll understand that this claim is part of that and I'll ask that the council not respond to allegations made like that because it is in the context of pending litigation where a sitting council member has sued not only the city itself, but officials, including planning commission appointees, volunteers on the planning commission. They've been sued by Mr. Lenu. So for that reason, I would ask that the council refrain from commenting on matters relating to allegations of open meeting law violations. Mr. Lenu has an attorney and if you'd like to communicate about that, I'm sure people will be happy to do so in that form, in that context.
See now, Mr. Schneider, you just violated our city policy. We don't talk to people with public comments. What I'm trying to say is, why is it that the policy is such a fluid thing and you guys don't follow it? In fact, I'd like to know why the cameras aren't open for public comment for the citizens of Grant to see.
Mr. Mayor...
Because that's also, I think it probably is that because once you start video editing a meeting and it's called a order, you videotaped the entire meeting.
Larry, you're out of time unfortunately, you're going to need to come back down and sit down and then you can talk some more.
I'll come back and sit down there and, Mr. Mayor...
Do you need to reset?
I would ask that, I would ask that next time somebody comes up there and you pay the same respect to me as you do Mr. Bowman. Mr. Bowman spoke very adequately, I support him on some of his items that he brought up. Actually, Eric, it's kind of surprising, I think we're in agreement.
Mr. Bowman had demand respect and Mr. Bowman has burn respect.
Yep, and I represent the minority vote, Mr. Huber.
So if you would like to follow the policy as laid out, would you have...
Next time I will bring you a head timer and you can do it, you've brought it into the meeting in the past.
You're going to take five minutes recess until Mr. Lenu finds his seat. Five minutes, Mr. Lenu, please find your seat, sir.
Not at your request, I'll come up here when I'm damn well ready.
Like a petulant child, I'm sure you will.
Yes, you will.
Larry, go ahead and watch your...
My point of trust.
Get away from her.
Everybody, I'm having a forum out there.
Oh, yeah, came in really fast before I even introduced myself, Larry, we don't even know what I said.
Well, you know, um...
Hi.
Hi.
We have a new leader.
Excuse me.
Would you like to...
I would use up for that. No. I'm going to go. That one? All right. Good night, boys.
Please focus your remarks on the substance of what you want to offer.
Would you like to...
It's not working. Okay. Here we go, guys, let's get back to work here. August 7, 2018, I hope you mean, we can go ahead and proceed with our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For Washington, for... I hope to have a night that we get our agenda... All right, let's go ahead and vote on it. Hang on a second, Tom, he jumped in here.
Did he get called on?
No, sir, Matt. He did not, he did not get called on, but I think it's important that we address this in light of the lawsuit that Mr. Lenu has filed once again against the city. So, let's go ahead and talk about the procedure one more time, Larry. When Mr. Carr and I sat in the minority, we had to follow the exact same procedure. In order to put something on the agenda, it is important to notify the residents that it's going to be on the agenda a month in advance so that if it concerns any of those residents or business they might be concerned about, they can come. When you show up at these meetings and try to throw things on the agenda, the day of the meeting, those citizens have no right, have no ability to know that these things, these issues are going to be talked about, and that's why it's not allowed. We've been through this many times. I'm not going to even entertain any more commentary because your motion is out of order because it's not the process in which we use, so I'm not going to entertain any more commentary. What I am going to tell you is that under new council discussion, you have an opportunity to bring these issues up and discuss them with the rest of the council and hopefully have them placed upon the agenda. You know exactly how this process works, I'm trying to be as respectful as I can be, but you know exactly how this process works. If you don't understand it, we can have that process sent out to you, okay? So you're out of order in this case and we're going to go ahead and...
Okay, I like clarification. I have a motion on the floor and I have a second.
You are out of order.
Now it's open for discussion.
Now you are out of order.
Don't wait for motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, we have a second. We need another recess.
Now you wonder why you're in court.
Mr. Mayor.
Because you like to...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Any more interruptions? We've got a policy that indicates interruptions or ad hominem tax result in elimination of the motion that's been proposed. There's no reason to be interrupting. We'll wait to be recognized by the chair, the chair recognizes us then we speak. We need order, gentlemen. This is a hard way to start the meeting, but if there's going to be more comments like now you wonder why you're in court or if there's going to be interruptions, we're not going to get here involved. We're doing the people's business and attend to the meeting.
You do have a motion and a second, but let me say, let me say the words again very quickly. Your motion and your second are out of order.
They're not out of order because the...
Calling them out of order.
Your policy procedures is not an enforceable document. If it's an enforceable document, we'll find out and in court...
That's right.
You don't follow your own damn policy.
No further...
And so, I have asked, as a mayor, I'm going to tell you right up front, I have sent my documentation in, I called for a special meeting, we can have a recess.
Recession again! Five minutes, try calling.
Now, the mayor, I've sent for a special meeting, I properly requested it to signature. I've asked to have it put on the agenda and now we're not going to have a meeting. So you can see what happened. This is our grant in action. And it's a limit to the council minority and I hope that anybody considering running your office considers when they're coming into this arena. That's what this is, is an arena.
You love that camera, don't you, Larry?
You know, Tom, you're the one that turned it off. If you don't want to listen to the citizens...
No, 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 bad, Tom.
No, it's not open, the meeting's closed. You don't tell me to go, you have given a legal opinion that I've asked, you're the one that's sitting in the chair. Give me, give me a legal opinion that I've asked for. That's why I've asked for a 40% reduction here. You have made me a promise and you've not kept it, there. I've asked you for your opinion and you don't do it. Stand and give us good legal advice. You had comments that are not based on anything. If we only put in action items, why is your comment in the minutes? Not an action. We didn't vote on it. We don't follow policy, Mr. Schneider. That's my point. In fact, we don't follow Thomas's rules.
Thomas's rules.
Yeah, Thomas's rules. We had Thomas's rules before, after Roberts' rule in parliamentary procedure, went to Thomas's and now we go to Jeffrey's rules.
I prefer Jeffrey's.
He prefers Jeffrey's.
Sometimes it comes off the tongue better.
Yep.
All right, once we get our attorney back, we'll see if we can keep going here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
When we resume, yes, like a minute to make some comments and then move forward.
Okay. Will the minority be allowed to make a motion prior to them jumping in? Is this going to be a race for them to pull something off the consent agenda, just as they get agenda? I did have a motion and a second and we're not going to discuss it because the mayor doesn't want to hear the voice of the people.
Please stop discussing council business where the majority of council present when we're not actually going to be...
We're not in a meeting?
We're not in a meeting, we're recessed right now and you're discussing things that are of interest to you with a quorum of the council present, which is a violation or potential violation of the open meeting law. So it's reason enough to be silent and wait for the meeting to resume. Please, stop.
I'm not talking to my quorum, I'm asking our council...
Jesus Christ, let's just move forward with the meeting. Pump the brakes. Let's just get this done. Sir, thank you for your patience. Sir, thank you. We're going to do what we can to get our move forward.
Hey, Noah's, hi, hey, Noah's.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and try to get this back in and we'll start again, we're going to get the cameras rolling again, so we'll try to explain and be respectful to one another and try to get this done, okay? We're going to allow the attorney to speak for a moment. Please roll the cameras, we're going to go back into an active meeting, please. Let me know when you're ready to go. Okay, very good. Now, we just took another recess so that cooler heads could prevail here a little bit and we're going to move forward now. Now, during the last second of the recess, just one more...
Screens are not required.
That's great. Are we recording?
Yep.
Very good. Screens are not required. Mr. Schneider, you asked to have a muller or so to make some comments when we came back into session, I would ask you to make those comments, sir.
If I could, just briefly, we're roughly 20 minutes into what should be the meeting. It has been marked by interruptions and quarreling and I have to say, Mr. Lenu, it's also been raised with comments that relate to litigation and threats of litigation by you. You're currently suing the city and several of its officers. If this continues, my recommendation will be that the council terminate the meeting regardless of the fact that you will not have had an opportunity to address the very important substantive matters that are on this agenda tonight. And so, if we cannot perform people's business and get through the agenda, there's no point in sitting here and grandstanding or making allegations or issuing veiled threats like now you wonder why you're in litigation over this. So, that's my sincere request to the council. If it occurs, again, my recommendation, the council's decision, not mine, but that'll be my recommendation, is to terminate the City of Grant meeting for August 7, 2018 and the consequences will be what they will be for those citizens, taxpayers, and applicants who come here with requests asking for action to be taken.
All right, and let me see if we can be, again, very respectful, we're just going to explain, these are part of the policies, these are not my policies, they are written. Any citizen here can get a copy of these exact policies upon a very simple request, it's simple. These policies are very well-known. I understand that they can be tough to deal with in the minority. I did it for two years, Mr. Carr did it for two years, Mr. Lenu, I'm sure if we have some respectful back and forth debate, you can get some of this stuff on. In fact, during our budget meeting, I don't think I'm out of order saying this, you had an idea regarding the fire contracts and I told you that if you brought that up under council discussion, I would be supporting that because I thought it was a good idea. So if we can get to that portion of the agenda, that would be fantastic, okay? Now, I have ruled that your motion and your second to change our regular agenda, do not follow the policy, they are out of order. I'm going to ask Mr. Carr, as he has his hand up, if he has a motion regarding the regular agenda.
I do. I would make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second, the first and the second.
I have a second for discussion.
Quickly, because we want to improve our agenda.
Right now we have a motion, I'd like to amend your motion to add health, safety, and welfare. I've properly posted a special meeting. Maybe you three councilmen can explain to the citizens of Grant why you conveniently...
Please state the agenda item that you wish to...
The agenda item I told you, health, safety, and welfare and public participation. There was a special meeting properly called for and there are given four dates and they all showed that to do it, so we're not posting for status.
Just tell us what you want to add and add to it.
So we put it on the agenda. I've told you, if you're listening, Mayor, that's your problem, you don't listen. We have health, safety, welfare, and public participation, we put it on the agenda. Because it's an important issue.
Mr. Carr?
And according to what you've done, you do not, either the council majority voted it down before the meeting or our city administrator, health, safety, and welfare, was not worth putting on the agenda.
Larry, I'm giving you about five more seconds and we're going to recess the next one.
And you said I have not, you said I have not provided documentation...
Mr. Carr, right.
I have proper documentation, so what you said is false.
Gets confused. Yes. What was your recommendation at this time?
I recently recommended, just minutes ago, to the council that if there was going to be interruptions and narratives that were not germane, uh...
Germane, to the agenda.
Interruptions, that the meeting be terminated because of this conduct. And it's impossible to function and it seems that some of us don't want us, want the council to function right now. It is my recommendation, it'll be council's decision, it is my recommendation that the City of Grant meeting for August 7, 2018 be terminated because of this conduct.
Okay, and I am going to say I respect that recommendation, however, we are at 7:28, we still have time, perhaps Mr. Lenu will let us get some of this stuff going. I'm going to give him one more chance to help us get through this very important business with the City of Grant. There are some very important things on here in terms of bill paying, in terms of assessments, in terms of meeting minutes, in terms of seal coding that are important to the residents and it's important that we get through it. Mr. Lenu, I would ask you to please, when we get to the council, city council reports and future agenda items, portion of this agenda, that's the time for this stuff. That's when you can bring this stuff up and you're going to have a full, you can have a full accounting of it, you can accept it fully, however you'd like to do it, but I want to move forward here. Now, you have proposed a friendly amendment to the regular agenda that has a first and a second. Mr. Carr, you need to respond to that friendly amendment.
I don't accept the amendment, it's vague and arbitrary, I don't know what it even means.
Okay, very good. It is no. Let's go ahead and take the vote and the approval of the regular agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to vote aye before you, okay?
It's open for discussion. It's open for discussion because I'm questioning your second.
We have a first and a second for the consent agenda.
Yes, that's correct.
Of course it is a race, we cannot simply raise your hand because if we both raise our hands at the same time, our mayor's going to recognize the council majority.
Larry, I need to go ahead and all this meeting very quickly, you don't get to the point.
Then you're going to have to call the meeting, that's what you want to do. My, my, my deal is our city states we take action items only, but our minutes do not reflect that. If you look at our minutes, and I'd like to pull the minutes from the consent agenda, and I'd like to hold a policy of our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, yes.
I thought that before, that both interruptions and ungermane talk be eliminated from the city.
They said germane, do the meetings.
Please, please don't interrupt because that's what brings us here. I additionally note, and I've noted before, that the city council and several of its officers have been sued by Mr. Lenu in Washington County District Court and in it, he alleges complaints relating to claimed open meeting law violations and also alleges complaints regarding agenda handling. The council is not in a position to respond to the allegations that are being thrown at it tonight that relate to that litigation and the council cannot respond to those things here. This combined with the interruptions and the failure to offer motions and be recognized by the chair caused me to renew my recommendation that because of these interruptions and because of this conduct, the meeting of the City of Grant for August 7, 2018 be terminated. And I recognize, obviously, that that would be a decision for the council. The council has worked hard to try to get through this agenda, but it frankly appears to me that it is intentionally being blocked from doing that and that instead, what is being offered is commentary aimed at explaining, justifying, otherwise discussing matters that Mr. Lenu has included in a lawsuit that he's brought against the city.
Right, but I have a legal question for the attorney before I move or accept any additional motions. To move, we have a first and a second on the floor for the approval of the consent agenda. Would the attorney recommend, in his legal opinion, that that vote be taken and then at least a recommended action we will consider, but would you like this vote taken first?
I think that's a matter for the council to decide. My recommendation is that the meeting be terminated in the face of these interruptions and this conduct.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on the approval of the consent agenda. We have a first and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
3-2, Mr. Carr?
Make a motion, we adjourned the agenda, sorry.
Um, mayor, council members, is there any possibility of getting a motion on staff agenda item 5A?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that if the meeting is determined or council to be adjourned or recessed, that you proceed to go to do that, recess or adjourn the meeting. This is the price of the interruptions that we are confronted with and the conduct that we're dealing with.
I did not understand that, you need to state that recommendation again, I did not hear you at first.
You voted to terminate the meeting, then terminate the meeting. Whatever agenda items are left undone are left undone because of this.
Yes, yes, I would agree. Go ahead, second down now. Not yet. Discussion, please.
Second, no, okay, a first and a second, that ends the discussion, so if you're going to second, now you can discuss.
All right, I'll second, that's all discussion. I still think we have a responsibility of citizens of this city to conduct its business. Is there any way to wrap? Can I add something?
No, you may not, sir. I'm sorry, not in the public group, I apologize, sir.
Wish you could.
Wish you could, I wish you could, sir. I have a first and a second on the floor to adjourn this meeting till September. This is embarrassing. Well, this is embarrassing and I apologize to those residents who came here expecting to see the city's business get done. Unfortunately, the multiple lawsuits, the incredible behaviors, the...
Costs.
The costs, the $150,000, the legal costs we've incurred, it's incredible. So make your voice heard, that's all I can say. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I still think we have a responsibility of citizens of this city to conduct its business. Is there any way to wrap?
Can I add something?
No, you may not, sir, I'm sorry, not in the public pool of talk, I apologize, sir, I apologize.
Wish you could.
Wish you could, I wish you could, sir. I have a first and a second on the floor to adjourn this meeting till September. This is embarrassing, I'm turn... Well, this is embarrassing and I apologize to those residents who came here expecting to see the city's business get done. Unfortunately, the multiple lawsuits, the incredible behaviors, the...
Costs.
The costs, the $150,000 of legal costs we've incurred, it's incredible, so make your voice heard, that's all I can say. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No, we're done.